Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Welcome everyone who is in the audience for this this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, you will ask me to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, it will be an opportunity in public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is pledge allegiance. And since he's kind of a short timer, we'll just ask Lieutenant Hopkins. No changes this evening? Councilor, any changes? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, roll call please. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Coke?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public communications. We do not have any listed public communications this evening. So do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none in the room, Cindy, is there anyone online with us who would like to address the council? No one has indicated that. No visitors? Well, we have visitors, but they haven't raised their hands. What's that? I said, "We have visitors, but they haven't raised their hands." If you would like to address, those on the line with us, if you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand out. Nope. I see any? Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is public terms. And we have no public terms this evening either. So we'll move on to the concerned agenda. We have a motion to approve the concerned agenda.
I move second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, roll call please. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans? Motion passed. Moving on to the non-concerned agenda. Oh, now you jinxed us. Item 7A, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1073. An ordinance amending section 168.05.22 of the Johnson zoning ordinance, C2 zoning district principal. C2 zoning district principal permitted land uses allow for one automated tunnel car wash or one in-beam car wash. This is second reading. Clayton?
No changes to the ordinance. I did want to point out, I did provide that redline version of the zoning text. And I did provide maps of where car washes are currently allowed and where they would be allowed other than the revised ordinance. If you have any answering questions, I'm sorry.
Councilor, any questions for Clayton?
I do, ma'am.
Okay.
Clayton, I had a slight interpretation different than on the reading. Do we really wanted to say convenience store, no repair on site versus no vehicle repair on site? The original, the original statement, I assume implied no vehicle repair.
What if they were to repair?
That was exactly my question. So I didn't know what... I would, I would know, but I also don't want a convenience store to, you know, if it had cell phone shop or something, I don't know.
I think the intent was no vehicle repair on site. So we certainly had worked the vehicle back in. That's the desire.
I think that makes sense.
That might be more clear.
Let's say I probably get to do a...
Yeah, we can make our motion. Any other questions for Clayton? Councilmember Burkhart, you want to make a motion?
Certainly. I do move for second reading with an amendment that includes or states convenience store, no vehicle repair on site under section 168.05.22. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Does everyone see what Councilmember Burkhart is proposing? Have you heard the discussion? Cindy, roll call please. Councilmember, ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading of ordinance number 1072, amending the Johnson Drive ordinance since 2007 by amending the official zoning map to recent parks, currently 1.73 acres, and adjoining Broadway for Lot 1 Eagle Ridge Estates. On C2, community retail commercial district to R2, 1 and 2 family residential districts, subject to restrictions set forth by the development agreement on Lot 1 Eagle Ridge Estates. Clayton?
No changes to the ordinance since first reading. The applicant has indicated that he continues to have conversations with the neighbors regarding the design of the subdivision. After any answering questions, we have...
Councilor, any questions for Clayton?
Ma'am, you know I would like to have a question about anything. But Clayton, just for clarification, the, the concern that we heard so prominently last time was with regard to access to that street. In other words, the, the number of driveways. That actually, at this point, is a site plan consideration, is that correct?
Yeah, per the development agreement which was approved at first reading, the traffic study and the design would occur with the flat, would be the next stage following the rezoning.
So no construction can take place until that's next state? I just want to mention.
Correct that, the quarter city council.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Clayton? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council?
Mayor, councilmembers, Patty Romero with 6749 Meridian Drive, Eagle Ridge Estates. I'm here and also representing the developer Raj. Just to report, we have continued development and collaboration. We are addressing the intensities that we have raised as concerns with safety. We believe we, we met last Wednesday their representative, their engineer, our engineer, our local council and some of their neighbors with an open mind of what kind of solution. We have shared some designs today and we think we could be there. And two, a design that were comfortable, that brings it from four to three. And that third driveway, not much past Eagle Ridge Drive, that tees into that, if you remember. It will probably mean some braces and easements as we work with the city to achieve those. I don't think we're undoable. I'm not an engineer, so I'll use that as my expert. But I think we're really close, so close that we may be able to forego the traffic study because essentially this will take care of our concerns from an intensity of the way it's been designed. Again, there's people to look at it yet, this was late in the day, Raj couldn't be here. But again, we really stand united that we're trying to find an actual way forward.
I think Patty, we are continuing to work on this. And I think we're all pleased to hear that the conversations are continuing and it sounds like they're going well, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on this side? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1072.
I move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, roll please. Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is 7C, consider approval of the following items related to PC case 2134, Northwest 59th Avenue Senior Lots located at 4720 Northwest 59th Avenue. Resolution number 21-370, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding park line dedication for Northwest 59th Avenue's senior lots. And resolution 21-371, a resolution approving the site plan for Northwest 59th Avenue's senior lots. Clayton?
Moving again. MBA H Partners has submitted the site plan for the development of a 51-unit, age-restricted, unrestricted housing development at 4720 Northwest 59th Avenue. The property is shown on our comprehensive plan as high-density residential and it is currently zoned R4 high-density residential. So the development is consistent with both our comprehensive plan and the existing zone for the property. Excuse me. The site meets all of our open space requirements for both area as well as landscaping within the open space. There are several buffers required on the site and the applicant has requested council approve alternative material quantities for two of those buffers in recognition that there's public easements within the north and east buffer that restrict plant placement since the easement doesn't allow for plants within there. So they're trying to get right plant, right place for that, for those areas. And planning commission has recommended that those alternative quantities be accepted. In regards to pedestrian circulation throughout the site, they would be connecting to both the new sidewalk and over 59th Avenue as well as an existing bike trail along the west property line with an internal private circulation throughout that affected residents. Parking for this site is provided in one common parking lot. Standard city ordinance of two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. One not reserved parking, one unreserved parking space for each 10 dwelling units. In the past, we have typically accepted a lower parking requirement for age-restricted housing in recognition that our aging, our aged population thrive less typically. Or maybe doesn't have as many residents living with a single dwelling. So for this particular project, we are looking at doing a parking of one parking space for every one bedroom unit, 1.25 for our two-bedroom unit, one and a half or three-bedroom or larger, and one unreserved guest space for five dwelling units. This is a formula we would like to consider moving forward as we get into our zoning code update of changing from a flat number for per dwelling unit and more focusing on number of parking spaces per bedroom to try and get a better accuracy. A one-bedroom apartment is going to typically have less occupancy than a three-bedroom unit than a property that's not equal. So for this particular site, that results in requiring 73 parking spaces using this new formula. They are providing 79. Planning commission did review that and had recommended acceptance of the modified parking standard. Site will have adequate sanitary sewer, water and storm sewer. And it will utilize a single drying detention basin. And will have adequate fire protection with fire hydrants and spray clear system. Park plan would be through an equal value alternative of cash and blue land dedication that had been due by our parks department and they recommended that cash and blue land dedication. The applicant has also taken advice from a multifamily housing identity study and they have provided a usable open space area in that southwestern area of the property which includes a picnic pavilion and generally black dry land that the residents can use does appear to be in compliance with the recommendations of that study. Architecture for the building is generally of residential design utilizing a gable roof and brick and lap siding as primary building materials. And that would be in compliance with our architectural standards for our multifamily housing building. And overall, the planning has been reviewed by our planning and zoning commission and they have recommended approval of this site plan. Happy to go to further detail, answer any questions. And we do have representatives of the applicant and the audience shift every question there.
Is councilor, any questions? Clayton?
Clayton, what are, what are the, what are the requirements as far as on the elevations and brick?
Direct from the code, exterior building materials shall employ a variety of textures and colors and window and door detail. The roof should be principally of gable, hipstone or similar residential roof design. The structure perimeter shall be varied when multiple buildings are proposed. Multiple buildings shall be segmented and angled with one another.
Is there a percentage brick requirement?
That is verbatim from our code, but I just read it.
So would you say that there, that there's brick that needs a requirement, there's no brick requirement?
There's no percentage requirement or square foot requirement. It's just shall employ a variety of textures, colors and window and door.
Do you know for their, for their, their site plan, what percentage of the, of the site needs to be brick? Is this kind of hard? The elevations that are attached are in black and white, so it's hard to assess what's brick, what's signed, that type of thing. And is this the last thing we'll have on? This, this would be the primary approval of, that we can see elevations?
Yeah, only one, one reading by council, by resolution. Yeah, I've heard of the applicant, they know the specifics of percentages of building materials, but city code does not require any particular percentage of building material.
For multifamily?
For multifamily. Commercial and industrial, we get into that, but not residential.
Other questions for Clayton?
Did this go out to the neighbors?
I did send notice to the joint property owners. I received no public feedback.
Another question was on the parking formula. And you're suggesting moving forward, but is that the same formula we used on the 55 plus apartments here being built on Johnson Drive?
We did not use this precise formula. We just had a total number requirement, but it comes out to approximately the same formula. If we did the math, we'd get the same thing.
So they can come back to us?
No. We haven't gotten this far in our zoning code consideration.
Clayton, two questions. What is the property to the east of there?
That is a multi-tenant, light industrial, wax building. I believe they have an auto retailing shop in there, auto repair shop, some other miscellaneous light industrial businesses.
And the site plan requires trees all along that border between those two properties, is that correct?
Yes, and the industrial buildings that are required have the proper authority.
What is, what is the zoning on the properties north of that?
Across Northwest 59th Avenue with M1 light industrial, immediately adjoining it was undeveloped parcels on the west side of 59th. Those are R4 high-density residential, those remaining three.
And Clayton, that cardioic failing, what, what is that zone that the law put it on?
M1 light industrial.
It is as well.
Yeah.
Were all of those zoned M1 at one point in time and the council changed those to R4?
Yeah, those four lots that are zoned R4 were resumed in 2014 where it was a plan to construct them as one cohesive development that proceeded into actual construction. And since that time, ownership is, they're selling the lot as individual parcels or development.
This may be outside of your realm. Do we have any dark service over on this side of the tunnel?
No, we do not, not, not dedicated lines. I believe a bright service would probably provide it back over to them.
What's the density? 3.57 acres, 51 units.
Are those at 3.57?
Yeah, total size is 3.57 acres.
14.29 acres. And their max is 16.
Under R4?
I just happen to have it.
Other questions for Clayton? Does council have any questions from the applicant?
I'd just like to make a statement. I appreciate whoever did the landscaping plan. I like the, the plan, girl. It's like a lot of nice diversity and a lot of make it's on there. I appreciate that.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-370?
I move.
Okay. The motion is second. Cindy, vote. Discussion? Cindy, vote please. Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-371?
I move.
Motion and second discussion? Cindy, roll please. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider resolution number 21-320, establishing the private hunting areas
Councilmember, this is just basically, we had one additional property on our comeback request. This property is under, it's at 7255 Northwest 84th Ward, on the west side of New Homes. There are a couple of the properties up there, these three that I'm aware of, that are active. This person wasn't aware that they could even apply to have the property under earlier in the season, so I said I would try and fly them, you know. I'm not allowed here this season, but I'm sure if they're successful, they might fly. There was some concerns with the neighbors going south about how it's affecting those proximity residential homes. And so the applicant voluntarily suggested that they have a hundred. That's what it's set back, the conditions of the setback that's required from them.
Do we know if that information's been shared with the neighbors?
I sent out a review of the agent writing with a map showing the setback and also a lot of explanation. I slipped up, I was supposed to have this on the last, missed the deadline. It's not going right to Cindy, so.
It was another week?
Yeah.
Two weeks?
So it was, it was kind of my error, so applicant's been very patient with me.
So we haven't heard any additional concerns since he modified what we're doing then?
Was there a... I'm sorry, I can't...
Mark your friend?
But basically I had emailed this afternoon to from the island. She's still actively... Her name's not appropriate and the stuff that she gave her.
Is this the same person who contacted prior to the last council?
I think quite possibly you've definitely contacted by two different people. I think the island has contacted you and I think that they, they have filed residence and also contacted you.
Not that Mary Hall contacted us.
Yeah, okay, well, Mary Hall is an additional.
And you, you had replied to Mary Hall with regard to that and indicated that it would actually be brought up at the Monday, January 3rd, 2022 meeting. You replied to her on 12/6 regarding that, that being as you admitted your mistake. Did you have any specific communication or comment that it was actually moved up here on this agenda?
No, it's not, because my list of some companies I have at my desk is set up for the TMZ schedule. So this meeting doesn't show up on that schedule because of the skip rotation in November. So Jim corrected me and said, "I literally need one of them." So in my case, can get this back on. So Mary may not have known, but I think she's on the original ten people that I mailed, mailed. So she should have had it. There is, there should have been, that's why she should have received the updated notice. Is everybody, does anybody that touched that property receive another notice?
So how much time is left in this coming season?
Is there... January 3rd is according to the document.
About a month.
Month and a half, yeah.
And I think didn't, didn't his, didn't his revision, revision say that he would be the only one to hunt the property?
Yeah, I think his intent is that he alone wants to hunt. I did speak with the applicant. This is down south of the Derry Cove. Took a couple of experience on his farm, so he was kind of good on his morning, but.
Well, I'm here now.
What?
I'm here now.
We haven't met the person, so it's not gonna bump there. But I believe you have, is it just your intent to have yourself hunt? Yeah.
Is this deer hunting or, or shotgun?
No, bow hunting.
I mean, bow hunting, yeah. Okay, I want to be sure.
Was, was there any, I may be confusing our urban deer hunting rules. Is there some sort of demonstrated ability that is necessary? Is that only on the public land or is that on private?
Every hunter that is allowed or permitted to hunt this land currently has to pass a IDPM bow hunting safety course. And then each year they have to pass proficiency test where they go to a range and shoot a long line, which is a certain number of arrows that have certain distances. And then we watch a certain wide instructor and that instructor strikes off if they're capable of shooting in both boxes.
And they, and they submit all of that evidence prior to even online for the...
Yes, great. And that's annual. So if Jeff wants to, he's dropping the next year, he has to go through the whole process again.
Does the council have any questions for the applicant himself? I don't have a vote in this matter, but I, I can tell you, we've had the deer, the bow hunting program here in Johnson for many years and it has been a very successful program just in terms of reducing the deer population that we have in this community. As we know, deer can be very hazardous, particularly in the fall and even during the spring months when they move around a lot during, during the dusk and dawn hours and they create havoc with vehicles and other things. I think the program has been successful in our community because the people who participate in it do know how to bow hunt safely and never have an incident where anyone has ever said that it's been a problem having bow hunting in our community. I think Mr. Lee, you know, I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. You know, some people just object to killing any animals. And they object to killing deer, deer, or rabbits or, or other wildlife they have in our backyards. But I think that, you know, Mr. Lee... But I think that, you know, Mr. Lee, um, has made an effort here to minimize the impact on the neighbors around him by reducing the amount of area on his land that he, he only will, will bow hunt. And, uh, you know, given the fact that we have allowed others in our community to do bow hunting on their property, I think, I think it's, it's, it's appropriate to grant Mr. Lee's request as well.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Okay.
Uh, David, can you show, um, Matt where the Blanchard property is? It's, uh, Lila Br- Blanchard. You know where she lives?
She would be farther to the west. This barely touches my property. I can tell you on this matter.
I looked it up today. She's right here this corner of the property.
Yeah, she squints that property off. So that, that is to the west or the south? Probably west and south.
Directly to the south. That lasts fifty years, fifty feet, on the south of this corner. Those green dash lines are a buffer. If you took the dwelling and buffered that by two hundred feet, which is the DNR's rule for hunting near residents, that's what those are. So that middle buffer there is, is where you can compete from the air ball.
I think the only question I have is not a question about a gentleman's ability to hunt safely is, is whether everybody who has concerns about this feel like they've been adequately notified when needs to occur.
Agreed.
I think there's a question of notice, and, uh, it's not hunting or killing the animals. It's about a notice requirement. So I'm kind of uncomfortable moving forward tonight. You know, that sounds like we've sent some mixed messages about when this discussion might occurs. I'm going to move the table aside. What are your considerations for the next meeting?
Make a motion?
Before we go for that, I need to add, I would complete the interest.
Well, we need, we need to act on the motion first.
Second.
We have a motion and a second now discussion.
I have a complete interest. I'm not probably not working on this. If I live in the same neighborhood, I know much way very well, but it's going to be a complete difference. Either way, making taps on that, that's the, I'm going to abstain before you know that. If I, you know, that.
So back to your question of notice. All of these property owners have been notified. First of all, um, it's a courtesy notice, correct?
Right.
Right.
And Jim, I don't believe it's, there's no law that says we have to notify anybody.
No, we've always sustained that as a matter of practice.
And traditionally, we've always noticed, noticed anybody that joins immediately, not just the property.
And they've all been notified?
They've all been notified now, at least twice, of the property.
The original application, the amended application?
Right.
They may not have heard directly from you about the meeting tonight.
Well, that's not true.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking David the question.
Okay. So Mary and Jerry Hall were wanting to.
That, that is, you had communicated with them on the sixth of December that this would be brought up on January third. So that, that was my only concern.
But there were eight partners that were notified right after the, by the, the Hall's.
That, that it would be brought up on the agenda?
Yeah.
And it was on the agenda. And it was properly noticed.
Basically, what happened the second notice I sent out said January one, and I didn't make the deadline again.
But they were notified when the meeting's. So I am, I'm a little bit, I'm a little confused as to whether the plan of notification.
Well, there's conflicting notice. An email was sent saying it's going to be here on January third, and then, and then a letter was sent to them Friday or maybe a, a live in mail Friday, which would have a different date, so it's conflicting information. I think, I think we have, I think we have an obligation to, to provide folks an opportunity. I mean, it's worth, worth the beat of Christmas that maybe they're not even home and they've gotten a mail. So we don't even know what they received about that. That says it's actually going to be held tonight. So I, I just think from a standpoint, from a standpoint that, that they, we've sent this conflicting information to these folks that we should defer and we tell them on the third, um, and, and have a discussion with that. And that's the motion I made. If people are objecting to it, we can, we can murder that tally. That's part of the process. Like this is, I'm not sure what the, this is for, but.
It's part of the discussion, and I'm allowed to.
Yeah, no, it's.
And I, you know, I, I will make the statement that I think that, that the neighbors in this situation have received, um, so more than sufficient notification about the fact that this would be on the agenda this evening. They got an opportunity to either express their opinions to us via email or some other form of, of communication priority. We want the data this evening to express, um, their comments about it. I think we have an applicant that is, that has been patient. With his request, uh, it's been before the council some time now. He's here this evening. He has made, he has tried to address the concerns, um, of the neighbors. I think he has done so appropriately. This is his property. The bow hunting program is one that, you know, we've had in the community here for, for many, many years. It's been a great program for us, and I think he should be allowed to participate in the program.
I, I don't understand that, that your point about it's been before the council for quite some time. This is the first time that we're seeing it, right? Yeah, so that's.
On the agenda, but we're aware, we've been aware that it was coming.
Okay. I, I made my motion, please, a second.
Any further discussion? If not, Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Ready? Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Motion passed. Do we have any other motion?
Uh, I move that we consider the original, um, request resolution.
Does someone want to go get the gentleman who just thinks, thinks that his request just?
That we re, that we vote on resolution twenty-one, three twenty, um, as originally stated.
Right.
We have a motion and second to approve. Resolution number twenty-one dash three twenty. Any further discussion?
I'm going to vote to approve it, but I'm very frustrated with the, with the, with, I didn't approve most of the communications. I wish we would have approved it, but I'd go vote to approve because I believe that we should allow. If we voted down, that would not allow any hunting. But I'm going to vote to approve, but I'm disciplining the discussion.
Any further discussion?
I would like to, uh, second what Councilmember Coe indicated. Uh, my response would going to be, I, I am in support of this. I've been in support of the other urban hunting private land. Uh, I appreciate the landlord has been able to kind of carve out a smaller area with deference to those neighbors, and will be voting in favor of this. The confusion about the communication is a very strong concern of mine. I even question whether mailing things on a Friday afternoon is more appropriate for a Monday agenda. So, especially in light of the holidays. So that, I look forward to voting in favor.
Any other discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
I'm standing.
Motion passed. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven E, consider setting a public hearing for January three, two thousand twenty-two at seven o'clock P M. Consider ordinance number ten seventy-four, establishing election process.
Um, late this afternoon, you all received email from Councilmember Martin regarding some changes she was requesting. We scrambled at the last minute to do our best to incorporate some of those. Some of the issues we have are the rules set out by the Secretary of State's office as they pertain to population numbers and census blocks that we have to follow as well as easily identifiable geographic markers for defining boundaries. So while I personally much prefer Councilmember Martin's equalized, clean, square precincts, they, they just can't follow the boundaries. So we did, um, make some changes to the numbering, um, as you requested. They can't all stay the same. And as I mentioned in my email back to you, uh, we were trying to renumber now so as we moved north and, and since that's where the majority of the growth will occur going forward, we wanted to be able to just add precinct numbers going north. But it's honestly makes no difference to my, from my perspective. Keep in mind, our precincts are really just voting locations. We don't have wards. We don't have any of those things. My last conversation with the, um, county election office last week is they really don't anticipate adding more voting locations. They'll just double up the precincts like we have done, um, for the various precincts that we have now. So there's kind of a lack of public facilities as we move north. So until such time as there has been some development up there that, that is sufficient for voting location, they'll just kind of still work their way to the, the polling places that we use. So this action tonight just sets the public hearing, um, to vote on the ordinance for this. You may not know all of the backstory of this. These legislative district maps had to be approved by the state legislature. That didn't happen until, I believe, October twenty-eighth. Uh, the governor signed them into law on November fourth. The unfortunate thing is, in all of that, they never changed the date that these became effective. So we have to have our portion done. The state has to, or the county has to have their portion done, and the state has to have their portion done, all by January fifteenth. So we're under a little bit of pressure to get these established and move forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Cindy? I just want to say I really appreciate the scramble, and it's not easy. I totally understand that. Can you scroll, uh, zoom out just a bit? I can't see the southern boundary.
Is that enough or you need more?
Yeah, no, that's good. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, tell me again why five is our most growth, uh, northwest? Why it's labeled number five and that, why that wouldn't be eight if we're going to be expanding?
I, I am happy to change them to whatever number you would like them to be. The numbers don't matter to me. So if, if you have suggestions for that, I am happy to make those changes, and I'll just adjust the ordinance accordingly. It's not, those numbers don't mean anything other than a spot on a map.
Um, I might suggest that that stay number eight, uh, up there because as we grow that way and we add a nine and a ten, it might make sense.
Yep, yep.
Um, I believe five used to be, um, the area that it is mapped on.
I'm, I'm cha, I'm changing to a different version here. Just one second. So in this, we do have this one numbered eight.
Yeah, and see, and this one I would make what is shown as seven, stay six because that's current.
Right, right.
Uh, and then.
David writing all this down?
I would wonder if, if five would make more sense to be where three is on this map. I'm, and again, I hear you saying it doesn't matter. I just like the idea that we would try and sort your precinct. You, you didn't change your house.
Right. No, I under, completely understand.
You're sort of still in that sort of area. So however it works out, my biggest thing would be to say to you, I think, yeah, eight's up there where we're going to grow. The ones that we can keep close enough to what they were before in the majority of, um, great.
Yep, and I'm, and, and we actually discussed that this afternoon. So may not be perfectly reflected on the maps, but we will get it corrected prior to the public hearing.
And I really appreciate how two now incorporates all of Green Meadows together. I thought, I thought that was, was a great idea. I appreciate that you got it figured out there. And, um, it looks to make, to me, it makes sense. Looks like six is going to maybe be a little confusing for people. But again, I understand that, uh, you can't follow the roads all the time. And so I really appreciate your efforts and thanks.
Yep, and six has always kind of been the confusing district. It was the one we added the last time. So it's been always kind of this odd shaped one. So we will, uh, get a finalized map and ordinance ready for the hearing on the third.
I will say I'm sorry I won't be in one.
I couldn't tell you which one I'm in right now. Let me ask. So, just so I understand, because there's like two maps.
You bet.
For numbers. So we, we're not changing the boundary. This would be the boundaries that we would go on.
Correct, the boundaries will stay the same. We'll just renumber the, the precincts.
And so the renumbering would be the one that would have eight.
Eight up in the top, correct. We'll try to stay as close to what we currently have as possible. Some of the boundaries have changed, so some people will be impacted. Did you have something to add?
Any other questions for us?
You took my microphone.
If not, do we have a motion to approve? To consider, um, yeah, to consider ordinance, to approve ordinance?
Nope, we're just going to set a public hearing.
Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for January third, two thousand twenty-two to consider ordinance number ten seventy-four?
So move to second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready? Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven F, discuss and consider resolution number twenty-one dash three seventy-six, participate in the rural solar program.
Yes, thank you. This is a, an item that came up actually just last week. Uh, we had a group that asked me with the mayor and I and, and some other staff about, um, their program where they promote and, um, uh, have solar installed, um, throughout the, the area. They've done this successfully in, in Warren County, and they want to move and, and do this in Polk County. And, um, the timing was such that, that we needed to talk about it this evening plus take action on a resolution to support their effort. So we usually don't try to do that in the same meeting, but, uh, and this was just a timing issue for us. But basically what they do is they're, they're contacting all the Polk County communities and, uh, asking them to, if they would be willing to participate in the program. There's really not a cost to the city, uh, to participate. It's really just allowing them to utilize, um, maybe our facilities. We talked about them using city halls for one of their meeting sites because we are, do have a solar building here. But, um, but they're going to have a series of meetings throughout Polk County and invite residents from the participating communities to come to the meetings. A part of the process is that they work with a firm, and they do actually do a request for proposals and get the cost of what it would cost to install, um, solar on those properties. So when they have the meeting, they'll have actually the cost it will be for individuals that are participating in the meeting and talk about the financing of that as well. And, uh, folks that are, want to participate, they, um, are able to access the federal tax credits to help bring the cost down for installing solar on their homes. So, um, so again, this is a, a program that, that we're just in, in fort, or, um, uh, having, we're, we're just, um, having our residents the ability to participate in that along with other communities in Polk County. It's not a, a financial commitment on our side, um, to participate, but it's allowing, um, our residents to, um, or, and making them aware that this program is available. So, uh, be happy to. So be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Again, it was just sort of a timing thing to go ahead and put this on for consideration this evening. We did receive a few emails today from residents that were encouraging us to approve this resolution and have our residents be able to participate in the program.
Any questions for Jim?
Mayor, Jim, first, thank you for passing along those emails. I appreciate that, and it's great to have a little office in the audience as well. But do we have any estimates? And I know it varies based on the quantity of residents or business owners who participate. Do they give any estimate as to what kind of savings one could anticipate by participating in this group five versus going it alone?
I don't recall them specifically saying what that would be. I'm not sure. Was it? Maybe ten or fifteen, I'm thinking. Yeah. And you're right, it does, you know, if there's two hundred people that are involved, or say four hundred people sign up, there would be probably a pretty big difference in what the cost would be to them. But one value that I really saw in this program is that they are, you know, rather than getting people to show interest and then going out and getting a bid, they do the bid upfront. So when they have the meeting, they can say it's going to cost you X amount of dollars to install these systems on your home, and then they will have the tax credit information to share that, and it shows the buyback period, payback period. And I know one of the individuals we met with that has participated in the program had indicated their utility bill, electric utility bill, six dollars a month after they put solar on their homes. So there can be some significant ongoing savings to people that participate in the program.
Just for clarification sake, the entity that came to you and approached you is not the reseller or the installer of the solar. If we will seek out competitive bids for this process?
Yes, it's a, yes, it's a five oh one C three, private, not-for-profit. I know that the Thousand Friends of Iowa are involved. The Nature Conservancy is involved, the Iowa Environmental Law and Policy Center, and the Midwest Renewable Energy Association are all a part of this group that is promoting this program.
We did share that the last installer that won the bid, it was the same installer that installed the solar in Jersey.
Yeah, they're a local company. I think they're out of Ankeny, if I remember correctly. So they have, you know, a little bit of advantage because they're already here. But it's a competitive bid that they do, so other companies could, you know, provide a more competitive bid when they do go out for looking for who the installer may be.
Any other questions for Jim? If not, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? As we're just here for support. Well, if there's no further questions, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash three seventy-six?
Move.
Second, no motion in the second for the discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven G, consider approval of fines in the amount of one night, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents. We have a motion to approve.
The move.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administration staff comments.
Just have a couple of things this evening. First of all, as most of you are probably aware with the holidays, we will, City Hall will be closed in our city facilities on Thursday and Friday of this week, and then also New Year's Eve on Friday of next week. So we'll be closed for business on those days. One other thing I wanted to mention is that yesterday, or excuse me, last week, we, as a follow-up to our senior event that we had where we had people come in and talk about what types of activities they'd like for our senior programming to be, which was very well-attended. Actually, we had a hundred and sixty people that provided survey information, either that were physically here at the building, which was about fifty folks. We also did an online survey after that, and we had about another hundred and ten of our seniors respond to that. So we feel like we have some excellent information on what types of events and activities our seniors are interested in. We had the follow-up last week. John Smits was involved. John, still here? There he is, okay. And with our consultant Tamara Kenworthy. And we met with a group of nine seniors that were, agreed to be a part of a focus group to really focus more in on what they would like to see, or how they would like the board to be created and/or reestablished, I guess, and activities they'd like to see. We had a very well-represented group that are very excited about what the prospects are and how we can improve on our senior programming. So we're very excited about that. We'll, you know, continue. We have to get the final report from Tamara on what the feedback that we've received. But then we'll come back to the council later on this winter to talk about the appointments to the senior board and get that group back up and active again. So I would have, I guess, I really just wanted to say we've had a tremendous amount of participation from our senior representatives, and I think we've got a lot of exciting things that will happen in that programming.
Jim, are you, the survey responses, is that something we can circulate to folks so we can see those? Or how does that function?
Yes, actually, we just received them just prior to that meeting last week. So I will get them out to the mayor and council so you can see what the results were. There's two sets. There's a set from the, it's just a summary of the meeting that we had here, that public meeting, and it's a summary of the online surveys as well. I will get that to you in the next day or so.
Did anybody else discuss any interesting pickleball?
A lot of interesting pickleball.
Is it Monday?
Anything else, Jim?
That's all I had this evening.
To move on then to the finance and administration budget.
Do you want us to do those now, or do you want us to have all your closed sessions taken and we can do them? It's up to you, Mayor, I'm just asking.
Why don't we put some pressure on you?
I can talk really fast. That's not a problem.
Sure, let's do it.
All right. So Cindy, can you go back to the December fourteen thousand, moving on four dots? I forgot, earlier, when it was, it was very important, I mistake. But as Cindy goes back to four dots, go into administration, finance and administration. I'm in the bigger documents, Cindy. And my first bulleted item is actually our liability, general liability insurance package. And we received an email from our, I am the safety group of part of the Iowa Association of Municipal Insurance Group. And we received a notice that they sent out to all of our safety group members, of course, talking about what's catastrophic year two thousand twenty, twenty twenty was, excuse me, with the deratio and how it impacted so many cities and many of their insured. And just to pull down what they had indicated we should budget, they're advising program members to anticipate an average, average rate increase of roughly nine percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three policy term. And it doesn't include any additional premium generated for any exposure changes or anything like that. So they suggest and say that it would be prudent to budget for an overall increase in the twelve to fifteen percent range. And so we had already budgeted slightly a ten percent increase over the budgeted amount for twenty-one, twenty-two in the budget of twenty-two, twenty-three. This one is really hard for us to anticipate because we don't get this built until April or May, so the very end of our fiscal year. And so when I'm anticipating the May twenty twenty-three invoice, the last invoice I received, of course, was May of twenty-one. So it's kind of hard for me to estimate. But anyway, regardless, that's what we did, that's what's in the budget, that's one of the areas that I'm responsible for. We'll see where the overall numbers come out when we do the entire budget. Then, one of my other areas of responsibility. Each year, I ask this council if they wanted us to include anything in the council reserve or any. There is a special designated fund, sub-fund within the general fund for the city council reserve. In the past, you've used those funds for things like old city halls, purchase new speaker systems for the council chambers. You used it for Kaiser on the Green the very first year, I believe, things like that. I don't have anticipated any regular transfer for twenty-two, twenty-three. The only expense we have budgeted in that fund is the Kaiser on the Green budget. If there's something else you're anticipating that you want, like fifty thousand versus three, did that in there? We did the bricks for our park in there. So special things like that. Is there anything else like that that you've been thinking of? This is, that's where I would include those, so we can put those things back in.
Teresa, where would we find this?
Under the, under administration.
Page one sixty-three.
Oh, I guess that would have been easier reference than that one.
That's what Kaiser on the Green.
Yeah, one sixty-three.
And Teresa, distance we're on with page numbers. The insurance item that you mentioned earlier, do you know what page that was on?
Yeah, that was on page.
One fifty-eight.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the general insurance line there, or which one was that?
Yes, well, basically, I have three of them. There's face, general liability, general property.
Combined is what, we'll do it by four percent. And can I clarify, you already, that's a ten percent increase over projected year-end right now?
Over the budget.
Okay.
Budget is a ten percent over the budget. And that budget is a projection of over the other years would have been a budget at that time. So it's, it's not a number that I'm very comfortable with. It's a lot less than we used to budget, quite honestly. We used to budget over four hundred thousand every year, and we're way under that. So we cut it way back, and hopefully we're estimating a much closer number. Let's see, one of the ones that I need to tell you about. One of the Jim will want to talk about. On page one seventy-three, that's where I anticipate the revenue for local option sales tax. I did increase that from our current estimate of two point two million. We do know that the state has indicated that our estimate, ninety-five percent of what they think we would get is approximately three point eight million. I should have brought that folder in here with me. Jim and I talked about it, and we decided we were going to estimate, what'd we say, eighty-two percent? Or we were estimating a lower number of even their estimate. You know, maybe we don't need to do that. Maybe the council will go pay with us just putting in the exact dollar amount that they estimate. I've always been so conservative. We can talk about that more later as we pull all these numbers together. I just wanted you to know that that's what I did.
Teresa, can I just ask real quick this insurance on that?
Yeah.
So we show, so our current budget, we estimated two point two million.
Yeah.
And it says year-to-date actual, two point eight million.
Yeah.
Is this on a calendar year?
I need to amend it, and you know what? I just finished doing the amendment, our first amendment, and I didn't, I couldn't include it in there because I realized I didn't change this number. That two point eight is because the true-up this year, if you remember, in November each year, we get a true-up. So that ninety-five percent estimate that they gave us is for a fiscal year, is for, yeah, for fiscal year. And then in November, after the fiscal year is finished, they come back and give a true-up and actually give you what you really should have received. Our true-up amount was one point three million dollars.
So that's what makes that two point eight a little bit more of an, sort of an aberration.
Yeah. So it was, it was over half of what we had expected to get to begin. So one of the things that Councilman Kope has asked me for, and I haven't finished that yet, is the true reconciliation of this entire fund for the revenues we've actually received, the commitments you've made, the debt service transfers we've committed to, so that you can just see what this fund in totality looks like. I don't have that for you yet? Obviously, that will be coming.
And then, just for, like, a year, you don't need to do it over multiple years. But it's just like, what's for, like, the current, we, the fiscal year right now? I don't want to.
Well, it won't be too complicated, because that's what I should be doing anyway, for history's sake. Then. Then the rest of my, I use my budget, oh, then there's the ARCA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We received our first tranche in August of this past year. That is included in this first budget amendment. We've committed, I believe, three things with that fund at this point. That too, I will give you reconciliation for. That, that is on page one seventy-six. And then. My actual department budget itself is pretty much the same, line items are the same. But I did have two decision packages this year, which I don't normally have. I'm on page one eighty-two of the book now. And this first one is a program or a methodology for budgeting called priority-based budgeting. And I've talked about with the department directors, and there was an article that I asked them to review. I believe I included that article with this decision package. I don't know if you've had a chance to read that or not. But the purpose of priority-based budgeting is to have the value and the priorities with the budget be more, more than just about the dollars. But that, it actually has to do with how we do our budgeting. And Jim and I were talking, and, you know, since Jim has been here, since I have been here, we have budgeted in the same, using the same methodologies we have always used. Maybe it's fine, maybe this council's fine with it, and we can continue the way we have been continuing doing. But I asked that you read that article and take a second to look at that. The department directors read the article, provided their feedback to me. I provided it back to the vendor for the program. They had some great responses, and would love to have the time to sit down with department directors. They had some great responses and would love to have the time to sit down with department directors and, and talk to them about it. It's, it's a heavy lift, it's more work, it is expensive. I do know that in Iowa City, the tunnel is, has used it in the past. I'm not sure if they're still using it, but they, it should be. But I actually came across this when I was working on my capstone project for my master's degree. And, you know, I've always have been kind of caught up a little bit on how I, we prioritize things and how we spend our money. And the more I read about it, I just, just get really sold with the idea now. Having said that, it is, it doesn't work if it doesn't sold from the diets right there on down all the way. So if it's too big a lift and too much work and nothing that this council can't hold it behind, then we don't have to do it at all. So take a look at that article. Follow me, asking for more information if you're interested. I'd love to talk to you more about it. That's all I really need to say about that particular decision package tonight. The second decision package that I have proposed, however, is one that affects all of our, well, that one would obviously affect the entire city too, but both of mine kind of affect everyone. But my second package, David, Dave already mentioned this briefly when he did his presentation for budget. And it is for migrating from our version nine. We have Toyota Technology, Incode Financial Software, version nine. We started out, I think, with version six back in the day. And you, and you do live updates. I do live updates weekly. I can do them at all times and then go up. Well, the version nine is the version that has stopped with the current, I don't know what the tech word is, but the current layout of what the program is like. If there is a version ten, then the version ten is it's more user-friendly and specifically more report-driven friendly. The current environment that we're in, we get the reports that are canned from the system or the design written reports that we had them write when we went onto the system back in two thousand and seven. We've been on Incode higher, Incode since two thousand and seven. That's when we converted. And so to go to version ten, we would then also be going to the cloud and saving maybe potential money on some hardware costs down the road. But I, I couldn't really quantify what those were at this point. But when you look at the cost, in reality, the cost to go to version ten is going to be more the implementation and setup tool and then the actual conversion, which was about forty-seven, nine, or forty-eight thousand dollars. The annual software maintenance fee of sixty-two thousand dollars right now, we're, we're in the fifty-four thousand dollar range or something like that. I think I had it in mind. Yeah, in June two thousand and twenty-one, we paid fifty-four thousand dollars and that fee goes up every, goes up about five percent every year. By the third year of this agreement, which they're locking in the price for three years, we'd be at the same fee anyway for our maintenance. So I don't really consider the maintenance fee part of this decision package as really anything new because I'm paying maintenance fees on everything as it is. The one thing we would get with this new software is the ability for the building department to do online, online payments easier than they currently can do them. They can do them now if we wanted to. It is just not user-friendly whatsoever. Everyone has to become a contractor. You can't put in a fence to build a, get a fence permit or a wiring permit without becoming a contractor. And there's just, just bigger steps that they have to do versus if we had this newer software for them. The other thing that I thought was going to be oh, collect time, timekeeping. Currently, all city employees still use a paper time sheet. This new system would be electronic timekeeping, timekeeping system with everyone putting their time into the system, them managing it and it being sent up here for into the system itself. Hopefully done correctly. And then we would have less paperwork and all that type of thing. So it's just kind of taking us to a a more current level of technology that we should be at. And in all honesty, I wasn't going to go here until after I retired and I figured that's not fair to this city. So that's why it's on here. I didn't want to do another conversion while I was still here, but I changed my mind and said that wasn't fair to all of us, the staff. That's why I was asking. So those are my own two decision packages.
Any questions for Teresa?
Teresa, just quickly on the second decision package, you had mentioned that there were some customer reports developed in two thousand and seven. Will either those be able to, I mean, do we still use those reports? And if so, will they be able to be ported in? Or will this new version ten allow someone to be able to recreate them?
Supposedly, I'll be able to do that.
Great. Thank you. If we decide.
And I hope so because the gentleman, Don Dennis, retired this year from Toyota Technologies. He was my guy. He was the one who wrote all those reports for me.
Any other questions for Teresa?
I'm sorry, just one last question. Sorry about that. On page one sixty-one, you had the hotel motel taxes.
Yeah, Jim, were you going to talk about?
I was going to cover that under my comments.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine.
Well, thanks for being brief, Teresa. I'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and talk about my section of the budget. So on page one thirty-four, I have responsibility for budgeting for the garbage and recycling and composting. We heard this evening, obviously, the rates are going to go up pretty significantly. And, and so the numbers I have in the, in the, in the preliminary budget are the numbers that I was anticipating prior to, to our news this evening. So there is some increases that are included in this, but I do need to adjust those numbers to reflect the, the costs that garbage and recycling will be as well as the what our revenue will be on that. It is, this portion, portion of our budget is a pass-through expense. So for example, if the cost of garbage is ten dollars and sixty-three cents, we collect that from our residents and, and pay that to Metro Waste Authority. So there's no, it, it's a pass-through expense. So there's no additional funding that the city gets on top of what our citizens are charged for that service. So, so anyway, what I do have in here is, is I, I go through the building permit reports every year and update it based on the number of new residential properties and then also anticipate some type of a, of an increase. I think I anticipated three percent, which would be normal, actually a little bit high. But with the information received this evening, I will adjust these numbers before the budget gets to you all in, in the latter part of January. So there will be some changes on that, but those, again, it's a pass-through. We, we get the revenue and then we, we pay the expense of that. So that's the garbage and recycling. The next item that I have is the welfare assistance and scroll down to that. And basically what that is, is the money that we put aside for the greater Johnson Partnership for a healthy community. This, these requests that we get from our outside organizations or our partner organizations, we're not going to actually receive them until January third. So we do put a placeholder in there. We, we've historically have provided some funding for the partnership. And so I basically left placeholder in there based on the amount that we provided them in the current year, which was fifteen thousand dollars. But we haven't, you all haven't seen the request yet and I don't know, you know, what it is at this point. But at least we've got some money anticipated in there so that, you know, we, we would anticipate providing some level of funding to that organization. The only, only other item we do have in this is that we do participate in the Des Moines Section Eight Housing Program in the sense that we provide some money towards the administrative services. And it's a fairly small amount, but we do anticipate that every year. And, and so we do include that in our budget. I think last year was about eighty-two hundred dollars. So it's not a, a significant amount, but it helps pay for the administrative expense for the Section Eight housing that we have in, in Johnston and, and all the communities that have Section Eight housing basically pay into the Des Moines Administrative Fund for that program. So we do have some money in that. Transit also shows up on my portion of the budget, but transit is actually, DART has a specific amount that they charge. They have taxing authorities, so they charge sixty-six cents per thousand. I think that's the current rate and I don't know what their new rate's going to be for twenty twenty-three, FY twenty-three. But that isn't something we budget because they actually have taxing authority directly to the property owners in our community. As far as the mayor and city council budget, I do put that together as well. And it, it really is for actually that budget as, as well as my budget, the city administrator's budget, not a lot of changes there. The primary change in the mayor and council budget is we are budgeting for a strategic planning session that would be in the summer, fall of twenty twenty-two. And it seems like we just got done with that because of the delay and with COVID and everything with our last one. But we're going to do a, a community survey in the spring of twenty twenty-two. And then we're also going to follow that up with a strategic planning effort for our city council. So I did put that in the budget. Typically, we budget that every other year, but twenty twenty-two will be the year where we, we do that again. So that's really the, the main change in the city council budget. The one thing I do want to mention, I'm not sure if the council members are aware, but we do put some money in there for training for the city council members. So if you ever find training that might be helpful to you in doing your, representing the city, we do have some training and travel money available to you. For example, if you want to go to the league annual conference or those types of events. So just communicate with us if there's something you'd like to do. We do have some funding set aside for you all to participate in those types of activities. Moving on to page one forty-three, which is the city administrator's budget. Again, not really any significant changes there, just some movement based on some of the past history of where we spent our money in, in that area. So really no significant changes. And then the final one, I just lost it. The final one that I, I do work on the budget for is our city legal expense. And as the council's aware, we just recently went out with a request for proposals for legal services. And so we do anticipate that there may be an increase in what our expenses would be at this point in time. We don't know whether we were going to be in a retainer situations like we have been for a number of years or whether it'll be an hourly situation. But we do have the request for proposals out there and we'll be receiving those responses. And so I did include some additional expense for city attorney services. And again, not knowing what that's going to be, we'll, we'll make those adjustments once we, once we get into a contract for those services. And then just real quickly on the hotel motel tax, I do have responsibility over that area. And I think, did you say it was page one sixty-one?
Fifty-nine.
One fifty-nine, okay. So with hotel motel tax, what we did is in the current year, we did reduce the amount of tax by twenty-five percent. With COVID, you know, there was a real reduction in, in hotel motel usage. And so in the current budget, we did reduce it by twenty-five percent. But as I looked at FY twenty-three, it appears things are bouncing back fairly, fairly well in those areas. So I did put it back up to what our pre-COVID number was. So we're back up to the revenue that we would anticipate for hotel motel tax, which is a so we went back to that. And just to let the council know, our hotel motel tax, we of the money that's collected, two-sevenths of that goes to the Greater Des Moines Convention and Visitors Bureau or Catch Des Moines. So that's, that's set aside. We put twenty, two-sevenths of the funding towards that organization and two-sevenths goes to Bravo Greater Des Moines. And so those are set by agreements that we have with other communities around the metro. The rest of the money, as far as three-sevenths, what's left for hotel motel tax, that does go towards funding of JEDCO, the Chamber of Commerce and JEDCO, the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Des Moines Partnership. And, and actually, we do have funding in there. And again, it's placeholders at this point in time, based on what our previous contributions have been to those organizations. But we do need to at least have something in there. We are going to get those requests on January third as well. So there may be some adjustments to those, but at least we've got some funding identified that, you know, I'm sure will support those organizations, but we're just not sure at what level at this point in time. So that's really most of the things that I deal with on the budget. Any questions?
But Jim, on the hotel motel, so I think you plug in two hundred and ninety thousand.
Yes.
Is it two hundred and ninety thousand, the full seven cents?
Yes.
Okay, and so then we have the three sevenths.
Right.
And where is the page that shows the breakdown of, oh, I think I found it. It shows, maybe not, with the page that breaks down how we spend the three sevenths.
So, okay, well, page one fifty-nine is the two-sevenths for, so it ends up in this budget to be, proposed budget to be eighty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars to Catch Des Moines and the same amount to Bravo Greater Des Moines. And then if you go down, let's find it here.
I didn't see the breakdown.
Maybe you can set it up or something.
Yeah, we can do that. But the, the amount is thirty thousand to JEDCO. The chamber, I believe, is eight thousand. Greater Des Moines Partnership is like nine thousand or six, five thousand nine hundred. I, I can get that information actually, it'll be in our, our budget memo. And then the rest of it goes to Park and Trails, whatever's left over that we don't give to those other organizations.
Yeah, if somebody could find that page and maybe just email that.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just, don't have it in front of me here. Any other questions on my portion of the budget? All right, with that, I think we've covered all the, the budget between our work session last time and, and what's that?
Just PD.
Yeah, we still, Dennis is going to do the more detailed budget presentation, presentation on the police department when he returns.
Anything else for us this evening?
That's all I have. I think we have ready for a close sessions.
So why don't I see if the city council has an, in the sharing of the Cosmo Evans?
I'm going to just wish everybody a happy holiday season and be safe.
I was in the Johnson Post Office indicating my stamps for the holidays. And on the sign there, it indicated that this year is the fortieth anniversary of the five oh one three one zip code. In nineteen eighty-one, was, it was prior to nineteen eighty-one, our zip code was Des Moines, five oh three two two. In nineteen eighty-one, five oh three one was, was became the new independent zip code. Nothing that hasn't really been stated, thank you all.
I'm going to do my swearing-in on Wednesday at four thirty here in the council room. This is going to be family and a few friends, but if you're in the, in the building and you want to stop by, great. I'm not bringing champagne cake though, I'm sorry.
What time did you say?
Four thirty on Wednesday.
A very distinguished person will be in this room.
Here that on Saturday night, the municipal consulate had a holiday reception downtown in their offices. It was nicely attended by representatives from all the sister cities as well as the sister states. Great, great little event upstairs in their offices first. You went downstairs to the veteran brewery and has some pizza and a little beer. So it's a nice evening. So, so nice evening. Great to have that kind of partnership with them. And with that, you know, two items off the agenda, which are closed sessions. So I will take a motion. Full session.
Who's going first?
We have first a closed session for Iowa Code, Section five one twenty-five. One judge says the purchase of particular risks may only work due to exposure. It would be reasonably expected to increase price, government would have to pay for that property. Minutes to adjourn the session, hold the minutes, and available for examination when the terms of action discussed is concluded. So we have a motion for a closed session. From blue.
Okay.
You have a motion, you can say that. Can you vote for it?
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yeah, one, one, one second here.